If we could ask everyone to stand for a moment of silence, then we'll ask Councilmember Bradley to lead us in the pledge and flag.
What's pledge?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shall we call the roll? Oh, thank you.
Mr. Bradley?
Here.
Mrs. Butcher Conway?
Here.
Mrs. Singer Erdley?
Here.
Mr. Lesby?
Here.
Mr. Showalter?
Here.
Mrs. Tingle Sains?
Here.
Mrs. Tackett?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Thank you. We not only have a quorum, we have a full house. Each of you should have a copy of the minutes of our last regularly scheduled meeting in your packet with the correction that Councilmember Showalter led us in the pledge of the flag as opposed to Ms. Conway.
Motion, Mayor.
Thank you. With that correction, motion's made?
Yes.
Second? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. In your packet, I believe you have a copy of our latest check register. If everyone could indicate if you've received that check register, thank you. It's the portion of our meeting now where we do public comments, and we like to hear from the public. Some have signed up. Even if you haven't signed up, we'll give you an opportunity for public comments. We've got several interesting items on our agenda this evening that will be very important for the council and the community. But we think those presentations will be very straightforward, and we can address those in just a few moments. But the first person to sign up under public comments is Ms. Jessica McQuaid. Hey, Jessica, come right up.
Thank you all for letting me come up tonight. I'm here on behalf of the Scott County Farmers Market. And as many of you know, last year, you all allowed us to use the beautiful new parking lot down below for our market on Saturdays from 9:00 to 1:00. We were actually very successful. The public was very receptive of the market on Saturdays, and really excited to have something downtown on Saturday mornings. So we are right there on that time of year again. We were actually going to start this weekend, Mother's Day weekend, two weeks earlier, earliest that the Scott County Market's ever opened. So we're really excited about that. And we're expanding just by a few spaces and adding some new businesses in, local businesses. Everybody that is part of the Scott County Farmers Market is from Scott County. So we think that's even a bigger testament to our community and what we are able to offer the people that live here. So we just wanted to get your approval to make sure it was still okay to continue our farmers' market down below.
Jessica, I think council's talked about this at an earlier meeting, and I think we're delighted with the success you had in the back parking lot. Folks clearly responded to the Saturday opportunity. And I think that's good for the vendors and for the public. And we were led to believe that you all might like to use a little more space, and the council's indicated they're completely comfortable with that. So I think just a vibrant farmers' market is what we hope you will achieve.
Does she need to come back every year and get this approved, or is this something that we're doing it anyway, you know?
You know, we might be able to give a blanket, but I think it's great to hear from them. And then if they have, if you want to change hours, or if you have different plans or events.
Heard a few people would said on Saturday they would love if you were just a little bit earlier. What time are you starting?
Nine.
At nine? That they had asked and wondered if they would start at eight o'clock. So we're passing it on.
That's very good to know. Very good to know. So we will pass that information on something we can definitely consider for next year.
Good. So I think we could simply do a motion to approve the farmers' market for the coming year.
Motion.
Second. It was extended space?
With extended space, understood.
They'll change it, huh?
They'll change it, yeah.
Yeah, and we'd be very flexible with that time as well. So motion's been made and seconded. If there's no questions for Jessica, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you all for your time.
So we'll come down and see you Sunday. Or Saturday.
Saturday.
Saturday, yeah.
You won't be there Sunday.
Under public comments, I know that we have some, I noticed that we have some scouts in the audience, and would be glad for those scouts to be introduced to the council, or if one of them would like to address the council on.
We're a troop 215, chartered by Georgetown First United Methodist Church. Most of the boys are working on their citizenship in the community merit badge. There's a couple working on their communications merit badge. So for the communications merit badge, they're supposed to practice active listening, and they'll have to report to me on what they heard tonight. And the citizenship in the community, they're supposed to be listening to how government works and report that to me. And Jake, if you want to introduce yourself?
Hello, my name is Jake O'Neill. I'm a junior at Scott County High School, and I'm with troop 215 as a star scout. There's not really much to say. I do have a question, though. What issues will be discussed tonight?
We have a copy of the agenda on the table out front.
All right, thanks.
That would be the best way for you to follow. We operate from a set agenda at every meeting.
All right, thank you.
Hello, my name's Luke Rollins, and I'm a junior at Scott County High School, and I'm glad to be here with you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Cody. I'm seventh grade Scott County Middle School. I'm a star scout, and I'm with troop 215 doing my communication, so.
Thank you, Cody.
I'm Brett Vanderpool. I'm a senior at the high school, and I'm a life scout as well.
I'm Zander Rollins. I go to Georgetown Middle School, eighth grader, and I'm a first-class scout.
Thank you.
I'm Dr. Isaac. I go to Georgetown Middle School. I'm a seventh grader. I'm second class.
We're delighted that you're here, and as I heard from your leader, there will be a test later, so.
Thanks, Dr. Isaac.
So you maybe should pay attention to that. We're delighted that you're here. You do have agenda?
Okay.
Good. Just a few short mayor's comments, and they will be relatively brief tonight. For our new guests, sometimes my mayor's comments last a little while. And they kid me about that a lot, but tonight they're relatively brief. Just a couple of updates for the council. We have been very busy on the Ed Davis bathrooms. They are under construction, not in the way we anticipated. We didn't get any bids for the project, and we directly solicited a number of local contractors, and we got no bids. So Parks and Recreation staff are acting as the general contractor, and we are subbing it out. I think today they had a full crew from Mr. Brohl's establishment helping them today. The doorways have been cut out of the back of the building, the floor cuts have been made, all the fixtures have been ordered. So we anticipate that we will meet the deadline that we committed to, although it's taken moving heaven and earth to keep that commitment, but it is going to happen. Just a reminder that this coming Saturday, the 13th, will be the Community Hazardous Material Day at Toyota from 9:00 till 3:00, I believe. The next two days, your employees, all your staff will be going through their annual wellness fair. We're pretty excited about the wellness fair, the opportunity for our employees to get blood work done, and even some of the very low-level genetic testing done to see what types of drugs are effective through genetic testing. That's available to all of our employees, and it's available to council members. If you'd like to stop by over the next couple of days, we give each of our employees that attend the wellness thing a t-shirt out loud in Kentucky and Georgetown located. So if we can get your sizes, we'll be glad to get you one of those Georgetown wellness shirts as well. On the, not this coming Friday, but the following Friday, on the 19th, we're going to have a city employee cookout at Fire Station 3. It's just an opportunity to take a very few dollars and celebrate spring and celebrate our employees, and certainly all the council members are invited to that event a week from this coming Friday at Fire Station 3. Also, this Saturday is one of our newest events, but it's taken on the feel of a tradition will be the citizens' police academy alumni association 5K with guts. This is a very unique 5K that our police department, that Citizens Police Academy puts on. Instead of a traditional run, it's three laps around the police obstacle course.
It's tough. It's tough.
And it is tough.
I walked it. I walked it, but it's tough.
Yeah, I think I walked one lap last year, probably, but I avoided all the obstacles.
Climb ropes and rappel down things.
There are 15 obstacles?
Nineteen.
Nineteen obstacles on this obstacle course. It is so difficult that we're not even timing people, because we're afraid they'll get hurt. Today, kind of an internal funny story, we had our newest employee, Devin, and Mr. Hartley decided to go out and try the course during lunch today.
We're here, we survived.
If they look a little slow and sore and so moving, it's because they've done the obstacle course today. We have for some years talked off and on about submitting a community development block grant aimed at certain neighborhoods. We've been doing some, just very preliminary work on a potential CDBG to benefit the Boston neighborhood, looking at areas that might have blighted housing or some old hulks that are partway burned out and need to be cleaned up for the neighborhood's benefit. Apparently, there are a number of different ways that we can ultimately structure a community development block grant. They can be to work on a specific street, or they can be considered a scattered site type plan, where they can just be all over a particular neighborhood. The program can be structured to help individuals rehab homes that they wish to keep with forgivable loans. There are several different ways we can structure this. What we promised the residents, and we asked code enforcement to put this meeting together, since these are primarily code enforcement issues that we're trying to clean up. Given Connie's role with the code enforcement effort, she attended this meeting over in Ed Davis Center. When we talked through the timeline, and we realized that we had to have numerous conversations with the community to make sure that we put together the application that the community wants us to put together, then there's preliminary work prior to the application being completed, and there's an August deadline. Along with the community, we determined that we could not meet that timeline and have the proper conversation with the neighborhood. It's not our job to tell a neighborhood what they want, it's our job to listen. So I think we're going to set up a series of meetings on a more relaxed time schedule so that we can hear from the community. We've hired a consultant, Chris Lowery, who has a Scott County address, who's very good at CDBG applications. And in the budget you will see tonight, we have funded a small amount of professional services for Ms. Lowery to help us do this preliminary work and hopefully file a CDBG. So that conversation is underway. We've only had one meeting, and I would think over the next year, there'll be a lot more, and we should be in a position to know what type of application we want to make a year from now. Also, this is not an action item for the council at this time. Council's aware that the fiscal court asked for a committee of two magistrates and two council members. I sat in on that committee, and Robert Duncan from Stamping Ground sat in on that committee. And what the court asked this committee to do was simply answer as many questions about the Clean Needle Exchange Program as we could. The court had asked a number of questions during their first consideration of the plan, and the court did not feel they got received adequate answers to all of their inquiries. And they ultimately voted down the program. Our effort was in no way to pressure the fiscal court. We were asked to help answer a number of questions. So the committee, with Dr. Crystal Miller's help, put together a needs assessment that is required by law. And this particular needs assessment starts with national data, transitions down to state data, and then transitions down to Scott County data to establish the need for a potential program like this. One of the magistrates had given enough thought to this process that he had written out 18 written questions, and Dr. Miller provided written answers to all of those questions, a PowerPoint presentation, and a copy of the proposed plan. The committee decided that we would simply make this material available to the fiscal court. We didn't want to make the court uncomfortable by asking that Wedco or anyone make another formal presentation. The idea was not to put anybody in a box. It was just to answer the questions we were asked to answer. Chuck and Connie worked on that committee, and guys, I think we completed it and said we had finished the work of the committee. So I would not, this will go to the court with no particular timeline. The court can take all the time they want to evaluate the information and pick it up as they choose to. So just wanted you all to know that we had been working on that, and the committee that we participated in has completed its work. Also, under mayor's comments, two action items. An executive order reappointing Shirley Hall to the Georgetown Housing Authority. Again, the Housing Authority Board is set by statute, who has to be represented. Ms. Hall is our resident board member. So we'd ask for a motion that we reappoint Ms. Hall. Thank you. Second. If there are no questions, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Also, we have an executive order appointing Frank Mason to the Local Board of Adjustments appeals.
Assessments or just?
That's assessments. That's PVA. This is a Tim Jenkins Committee when he has an appeal. I think three people who have knowledge of the local real estate market do a windshield appraisal or something, and thought that Frank was very well qualified to serve on that.
Motion.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. If there are no questions, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item seven on your agenda listed under City Attorney is the second reading of the amendment to the sign ordinance that we discussed in great detail at the last meeting. Tonight, will be second reading of the ordinance where we anticipate a roll call vote. If it passes, then the ordinance would take effect upon its publication. We, council had originally been given a date of today, May the 8th, for when the Board of Adjustments was going to meet
Right.
to consider the appeal that they had before them. The Board of Adjustments recognized that they need the tool available to them that you're creating tonight.
Makes.
But that tool will not be available until after publication. So it made little sense for them to meet at 5:00 tonight before we've completed the ordinance. So they have rescheduled that hearing for June the 5th, which is their regular meeting date. So that appeal will be held by the Georgetown Board of Adjustments on June 5th, and hopefully they can use the ordinance that we've created tonight. So with that bit of introduction, I think we're ready for second reading of the sign ordinance.
An ordinance amending the Georgetown sign ordinance. Summary. Amend the Georgetown sign ordinance to define non-commercial flag and commercial flag. Allows display of non-commercial flags not exceeding 32 square feet in area or attached to poles not exceeding 32 feet in height in all zoning districts without a permit. Allows one non-commercial flag per parcel exceeding 32 square feet in area and/or attached to a pole exceeding 32 feet in height to be displayed in certain districts with a conditional use permit. Defines non-content-based criteria that must be satisfied for the conditional use permit. Allows the Board of Adjustments to approve a smaller flag or shorter pole when necessary to satisfy the criteria. States that a permitted non-commercial flag that otherwise satisfies the requirements for a conditional use permit shall not be considered a sign for purposes of a limit on the number of signs in the applicable district. Allows one commercial flag per parcel not exceeding 32 square feet in area or attached to a pole not exceeding 32 feet in height in commercial, industrial, and professional office districts. Provides the commercial flags exceeding 32 square feet or attached to poles exceeding 32 feet in height are considered interstate signs. Makes various amendments for consistency with revised provisions. Provides for several ability, repeal of inconsistent ordinances, and an effective date upon passage and publication. Publicly introduced and read for the first time April 24, 2017. Publicly read the second time May 8, 2017.
Thank you. We'd be glad to accept a motion for its approval, and then after we get a second, we can discuss it as much as we need.
Motion.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Be glad to take any discussion that we have. We hashed most of this out at the last meeting. And in response to questions, this does not set a limit on how tall a sign pole can be. That would be up to the Board of Adjustments, our citizens, to determine what that would be. But we have given them the flexibility to make those decisions.
Mayor, a quick question. What about the distance from the interstate? Where did we land on that?
I don't think we'd.
Was that not in our scope of responsibility? Is that something they would determine then?
It will be considered the same as the setback for interstate signs.
Okay.
Which shouldn't have to exceed 50 feet.
Right.
And if there are no questions, if other questions, shall we call it?
Mr. Bradley?
Yes.
Mrs. Butcher Conway?
Yes.
Mrs. Singer Erdley?
Yes.
Mr. Lesby?
Yes.
Mr. Showalter?
Yes.
Mrs. Tingle Sains?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
The ordinance passes. Once we get it published, it will be law. I would like to say how proud I am of the Georgetown City Council. These issues can be very difficult, and they tend sometimes to divide people. But I think the council has pulled together in one direction to find a good solution for the Board of Adjustments, and just compliment the council on the way you've handled this issue. And I'm sure we'll hear more if the Board of Adjustments goes a different way.
Mayor, really, the same needs to be said of you and Andrew. I know that you all kind of dug in and did a lot of work on this, and kind of echo what you're saying. I mean, we've all got the flag sitting right here in front of us, and we have had for many, many years. So kind of united we stand and divided we fall.
Exactly right.
Thank you. The other item under City Attorney is very simply a municipal order approving an easement for the Kentucky Wired Project. We've done this several times previously on various polls to get this Kentucky Wired Project moving forward. So do we need to read that MO? It's pretty short, isn't it? Oh, yes, ma'am, please.
An order authorizing the mayor to execute a right-of-way deed of easement with the Commonwealth of Kentucky for the Kentucky Wired Project, whereas the Commonwealth of Kentucky Finance Administration Cabinet has requested an easement to install poles pole lines across existing telephone poles on city property at Corporate Boulevard, Georgetown, Kentucky. Now therefore, it is hereby ordered by the Georgetown City Council that the mayor is authorized to execute the attached deed of easement.
Thank you. There are motion for a
Motion.
Thank you. Motion's made?
I'll second.
And second. If there are no questions, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Two large pieces of business that we still have before us tonight. Father Lynn, Harry Dads, and others are here from the Catholic Church. We will be talking in detail about the proposed transaction between the city of Georgetown and the Catholic Church concerning car dump. And we'll want to have, we want to make an executive session available to the council since this is a land transaction. We will have to take action in public session, Father Lynn, but we may want to have some conversation in executive session. But before we get to that item of business, we are prepared to present the council with the budget presentation tonight.
Good.
For our audience, we set by ordinance the dates by which we will consider our budget ordinance. Tonight is the ordinance deadline for when we present the ordinance to the council and to the public. Then the council has, will have at least two weeks until our next regularly scheduled meeting, and at that time, we would anticipate having first reading of the ordinance to approve the budget. Ordinances require two readings and publication. We would then have, there will be time for the council to ask a lot of detailed questions in that interim, and we would anticipate having second reading of the budget and hopefully approval on June the 12th, which would be our first council meeting in June.
Good.
We're required by law to have a new budget in place by August, excuse me, by July 1st. So tonight, we present the budget even though there is no vote taken tonight. Just a couple of comments. Stacy and I, Stacy has done remarkable work on the budget, and I must thank Stacy Clark as our finance director, and each of our department heads for the way they have worked with us on developing the budget. You've probably had time to look through my cover letter for the budget, and it truly is the one time a year that we get our most detailed look at city operations. We get to look at every account, we get to talk with every department head about every activity, and we go through each of the different funds that we have. So it's an annual opportunity that is a lot of work, but it's very productive, and it gives us, I think, a much better handle on the upcoming year and what our upcoming capital needs are as well. As we have in years past, we ask the department heads to advocate forcefully on behalf of their departments. We don't want them to hold back. We want to know We want to know what they believe they need for the future, and it's a healthy exercise for them to explain that for us and for us to push back a little bit and make sure that we're funding at an appropriate level. Your total budget amount this year shows expenditures of just around twenty-five million dollars. We have been able to balance this budget with no additional taxes or fees or increases. We have been able to write in a raise for each of our employees, and we'll go through all this in detail. This year, we elected, what is before you is a document that will grant each of our employees a three percent raise. But we put in the stipulation that none of our employees will receive less than a thousand-dollar annual raise. So we have a handful of employees, most of them in the sanitation department, that fared better with the thousand-dollar minimum than just the across the board. And Stacy, I think, for me, the best way to go through this is just kind of to follow the PowerPoint. We think the PowerPoint will give you a very good understanding of the budget. We've worked closely with the finance committee in getting to this point, and some of you all may have worked with your department heads for your specific committee on things that they wanted in the budget. During this thirty-thousand-foot view, we want to show you everything that we were asked to fund, what your department heads asked for, and we'd like for you to know what we were able to fund in the budget and what we had to take out of the budget, so that you all know exactly what we know. We also ask our department heads to prioritize anything that did not get funded in this draft so that during a mid-year budget review, we're in a position to already know their priorities for things that may not have gotten funded. So the things that we'd like to go over with you tonight is our revenue analysis, and I'm very pleased, I had reported this to the finance committee, that we went through our revenue analysis on a real deep dive. Stacy got monthly numbers from the revenue commission, so we could tell if the later months in the fiscal year have as much impact as the early months. We tried to get down to pretty tight estimates on the revenue. And once we developed those revenue numbers, we did not go back to them. There is, there's a real tendency late in the budget process, when it doesn't quite balance, and there are things that you don't want to take out of a department head's budget, there's a temptation to go back to the revenue budget and tinker. We refuse to do that. So we set our revenue estimates, and we held to them. I will say that we relied in our discussion a lot on the council members who turned in revenue estimates. They were very helpful to us. And we frequently, in our debate about looking at the data, looked at your loss predictions, and they helped us. So thank you for participating in that. We want to run over with you what our personnel costs and needs are, look at our capital expenditure request, kind of walk through a high-level view of our operating expenditures. We want to take a specific look as we went through all of our funds. A couple of them are going to be depleted in a couple of years that we've just drawn from over a long period of time. But they're drawing down to being depleted, and they will become general fund expenses within a year or so. And then we also want to talk with you about, we want to have a discussion about the use of prior year revenues. We've got several capital projects to discuss with you, and we also want to have a discussion with the council about the status of our current debt and what we may want to consider doing with some of that debt. So, pretty big picture. Jen? Boy, Stacy, I might let you explain that. It's a nice trend. This is, we give you all five-year trend data to work on revenue analysis with, but I thought this optic was helpful.
So I went back to two thousand eight, about nine, ten years, and wanted to see how our revenues have changed, and as well compare that to what we budgeted for this year and what we projected for next year. We had some obvious years of the economic downturn, things out of our control that happened, and you see a lot of that through two thousand nine to two thousand eleven. Beginning in two thousand twelve, we start to see it tick back up. And one of the things, of course, with probably two thousand twelve to two thousand sixteen, we really see the increase from eighteen to twenty to twenty-one to twenty-three. Two thousand sixteen's a little bit of an anomaly. You see that big spike. We had a one-time large payment that we will not see every year in that, but it was twenty-six point five million. Our two thousand seventeen budget for revenue was twenty-one point five million. Obviously, two thousand fifteen and sixteen, we started seeing the incentive package affect our payroll withholdings, so that's why two thousand seventeen looks a bit lower. We don't have the one-time payment, and we have a full year of the payroll incentive program. As you will see, for two thousand eighteen, we are projecting revenues at about two point two million higher than we did this current year. So like he said, we, we're very careful. We're both conservative. We don't want to go any higher than we're comfortable with on any of the revenues, but we also wanted to carefully review our trends and how things were going. Georgetown is experiencing growth, which we're also experiencing growth in revenue. So we did increase our revenue budgets by two point two million over the current year. Obviously...
Stacy, it'd be a good time for me to point out. When we began this exercise, the first time we began this exercise, three years ago, it's hard to imagine this is our third budget that we've worked on, we indicated then that as we learned how to deal with the incentive package, that we expected for the first four years of our budget preparation, that we would use one point five million dollars annually from fund balance to help us balance. And we have done that this year, which is the third year we will have taken that step. I believe that there's a point in the future when we'll need to wean ourselves off of that, but that is consistent with the way we've done the last two budgets and what we anticipate for next year's budget as well.
Yes, and in conjunction with that, our revenue amount projected is twenty-three point seven. So you'll see a little later in the presentation, our expenditure budget for the general fund is twenty-five point two, which accounts for us using one point five. We'll look at a couple of the revenues in a little more detail, but of course, we always want to look at our occupational license fees. That is where the majority of our revenue comes from. We have our one percent payroll tax and our one percent net profits. Net profits is always hard to predict. The economy affects it, obviously. New businesses coming in affects it. And again, we see one large tick in two thousand sixteen, again, from that one-time payment that we received. But since about two thousand thirteen, our net profits, which is the bottom line, the dark blue line on the graph, it goes two point two, two point two again in two thousand fourteen, up to three point three. The six point one million year, again, had about a one point seven million dollar one-time payment in it. And then two thousand seventeen, we projected two point eight million. We felt a little more confident in our revenue numbers. I did a very detailed analysis on net profits. We looked at information that Scott Hall sent us and felt comfortable in two thousand eighteen projecting three point five million of net profits revenue. With the payroll taxes, two thousand twelve, thirteen, fourteen, they were fairly consistent, ten point two, ten point three. Then they jumped back up to eleven. Two thousand fifteen, they were twelve point one. Then two thousand sixteen, which is our first fiscal year to experience the incentive package, they were down to ten point seven. Two thousand seventeen looks low in comparison at nine point eight million, but two thousand sixteen did not have a full year of incentive. It started in October, so we had about a quarter of the year that did not have the incentive package. And then, of course, we didn't have our final numbers at the time we were developing the budget last year. But you can see, because of the confidence, the strength of our two thousand sixteen numbers, our careful review, we have increased our projections for two thousand eighteen to eleven million, which is really only three hundred thousand more than two thousand sixteen, but we, we feel comfortable with that. We know there's been some activity coming into the county or the city with construction projects that are going out, but then there's new construction projects coming in, so hopefully we see a trade-off in that level of activity.
We hope. We've just wondered aloud about the specific activities that will happen in Georgetown in the coming year. We're going to be building a high school. There's going to be significant spending by contractors at Toyota when they do their plant renovation. So we know there are some very large-scale employment-related projects that we think might help us outperform this budget, but we were just unwilling to count on it any heavier than this.
Can I very quickly touch on a couple of revenues that are not in the PowerPoint, but just property taxes? We increased by about fifty-five thousand over our current revenue. We've been seeing growth in that with all of the new development coming in, new assessments. The property taxes go up. One of the others, building permits. We've increased that budget from three hundred and thirty to four hundred in the new year. Business is booming in the development right now. Our insurance license fees, we increased from two point three million to two million four hundred and fifty thousand. We've been seeing growth in that, additional homes, additional insurance, and a lot of that. Those are the main ones that I wanted to call your attention to. But obviously, these two are the big players. The next thing the mayor mentioned, we will go over kind of a salary and benefits overview. He's already mentioned the three percent raise, one thousand dollar minimum for all employees, which really helps some of our lowest-paid employees, but the three percent just doesn't quite get them there. But the good thing with three percent, as we've heard from some of our other departments, it keeps the separation at the top tier. So this is kind of that hybrid approach that keeps the separation among the ranks in fire and police, but also provides a benefit to our lower-paid employees who don't benefit from the three percent as much. They finally have increased CERS rates. I think for the last couple of years, they had gone down, and all we hear about is it not being fully funded. They have finally increased them both by around a half a percent for hazardous and non-hazardous. So you can see the thirty-one point five five and the nineteen point one eight are the new numbers that we are working with for next year. We were able to keep our medical, dental, and vision rates the same for employees in this upcoming budget. We've been doing some analysis on that and things we might need to think about in the future. We talked a little bit about how being partially self-funded, we may have bad years. Last year was not our best year, so we're trying to recover from that a little bit. But we always have two scenarios. We have a worst-case scenario from our stock loss coverage, and we have an expected scenario. With the worst-case scenario, we're still funded, we're still covered. With the best-case scenario, we should be able to build that cushion back up to around, hopefully, half a million by the end of next year. And then we want to get it a little bit higher just for when we do have those bad years.
We, a half a million, I think, will be our minimum goal. When we get closer to seven hundred and fifty thousand or possibly a million dollars balance in that medical account, then we'll be in a position of doing some real innovative things with employee wellness programs. We can use the funding that the employees have provided through their self-insurance pool and help them with wellness initiatives, which drive down health costs further. So on a self-insurance pool, you like to string together three or four or five years, good years at the beginning of the plan, and we had good years for the first couple, and we threw in a clunker. So we're having to manage it a little bit right now, but we do not, even the worst-case scenario does not have us going into the general fund for claims.
And I did forget to mention, but just in case you're wondering, the raise with all of the benefits cost around three hundred and seventeen thousand. That's across all funds, so not all of that's in the general fund because you have sanitation, recycling, cemetery employees as well.
Yeah, as we looked at the three raise scenarios, they were remarkably close to the same cost. I think the thousand and forty was three hundred and five thousand, doing the three percent was three hundred and twelve thousand, and adding the benefit for our lowest-paid employees only added about five thousand dollars to the total salary increase. So we thought that was a step we could take. The finance committee and several of the emergency service committees, police and fire, have probably heard a lot about sick leave buyback programs. We're not used to those in the private sector, but in the public sector, some places use sick leave buyback, where if someone has three weeks of accumulated sick leave toward the end of the year in November, they can sell back one week of that time as long as they maintain two weeks. We've been asked about that program for several years from the fire department and the police department, where it would probably have the greatest impact. We calculated the cost of adding that benefit this year, and it's eighty-one thousand dollars citywide. What we've, we have not funded that this year, but we would like for, if the police and fire committees can continue to discuss it with your chiefs, we'll continue to discuss it with the finance committee and try and understand it better, and then maybe in another year, we can look at funding it. But it's not in this year's budget. We've been very, very meager with adding employees in this budget cycle. There it is. We have added, we've recommended in this budget that we hire two additional police officers, and those are frankly the only new personnel recommended in this budget. We think this will get the police department closer to that traffic enforcement unit that we talked about a year ago. So we also wanted you to see what we did not fund. We did not fund, the fire department has asked for an assistant fire chief, dispatch, asked for two additional dispatchers. Code enforcement strongly, strongly desires to make their part-time administrative assistant full-time, and I told them that we would, we would evaluate that at the mid-year's budget.
And we did add some additional hours in the budget, enough that they wouldn't go over the part-time requirements for CERS and everything, but just to give them a little additional help, but not all the way to full-time.
Kyle asked for a project engineer, and we did not fund that additional engineer in this year's budget, but it's probably warranted. Given, given our newfound stormwater responsibilities, that's a seed planted for a future budget when we might have to consider that position, but we haven't funded it yet. We didn't, we thought a lot about the two additional dispatchers because we don't want that department to be overly stressed. We met with Lieutenant Whitaker and Chief Bossy, and they are convinced that they can manage through this without the two employees at this time. So very few additional personnel. Some of the capital expenditures that we've anticipated, we've, the same twenty thousand dollars that we had budgeted previously for a city hall needs assessment. We know that we will need to come back with you and discuss either prior year revenue or debt to talk about how we undertake repairs to city hall, but we've got to start with the plan, and that's the seed money to get us the plan. In your current year's amended budget that we just recently changed, we included two hundred thousand dollars for engineering in the business park. The new budget has included five hundred thousand dollars of engineering services. Those two amounts combined will be seven hundred thousand dollars of engineering, which fits the roos, the loose roos, that, the loose rule of thumb that engineering services cost about... ruse, the loose ruse, that, the loose rule of thumb that engineering services cost about 10% of a project. And we think our business park project is a $7 million project. So within our current and next fiscal year's budget, we have included all of the engineering money for the business park. We do anticipate that the county will be our 50-50 partner. And I do anticipate getting half of the 200,000 back this year and half of the $500,000 back. But it's at least funded to the point where we can begin the engineering work based on our own funding. We've also included in this budget, the city's portion of the sewer line extension out to the south to the trailer parks. That would be matched with the county's 250,000, and we've gotten word that the Lexington Fed, Urban County Government, has included $475,000 in their draft budget for this project. Still has to be voted on by the Urban County Government, but I would be surprised if it gets stripped out.
What does the water company put into it?
With our, the way we've got the formula right now, the water company can afford to put in $1 million if they have the revenue source from there. The customer base out there should be worth bonding capacity of a million dollars. If the city, county, and Lexington put in right at another million is 2 million, and then we've got the $1,075,000 grant that the county got from the state, that's now been earmarked for this project. So we're at $3 million in hand or available now. We think it's between a 3.5 and $4 million project. We would expect the trailer park owners to pay a million-dollar privilege fee to tap on. The only, the only piece of information that we don't have today to move forward with that project is how much it takes to fix the infrastructure inside of the trailer park, which the owners are responsible for. We've talked to their engineers. They're in the process of trying to run cameras and do engineering evaluations. We have led the bank, Midland Group, that holds title to it now, which is a subsidiary of P&amp;C Bank. We've told them that they're looking at probably a $2 million investment, $1 million to hook onto our sewer line, and $1 million to fix their infrastructure inside the park.
Needs it.
Needs it. The biggest environmental problem Fed and Scott County have.
Yep.
Been that way for years, and we finally get to address it.
Yes, sir. Under building inspection, we have funded them a pickup truck, and we funded them a little bit of office furniture, since we're going to move three agencies into the old water company building, building inspection, electrical inspection, and code enforcement. Under Police Department, we bought them, we have suggested buying them eight cruisers. I think they asked for nine. We had to cut something. So we cut, we cut a cruiser. And we have, our canine dog is old and going to be retired this year. Surprisingly, of that $16,000, very little is for the dog. Most of that's to train the human.
We got that bit.
So we do anticipate, we'll have a little bit of overlap, but we'll be replacing our canine this year. Fire Department, we took out some stuff from the Fire Department, but we also funded a bunch. The Fire Department has the privilege of, when they buy things, they are very, very expensive, Chief Ward.
Big toys.
So when we buy anything, it costs a lot for the Fire Department. We are going to purchase the
Pumper.
Second half of the pumper, which I think Chief will be ready in August for you. So we should take delivery of that new pumper, and we're prepared to make the final payment there. Chief Ward's been after a replacement administrative vehicle for several years, and we got it funded. We'd like to buy two sets of extraction tools, and this will allow, this buys a large set and a smaller set, so we'll be able to have extraction tools on all of our frontline units. We thought that was pretty important. And then a small flooring repair at Station Two that's been kind of a problem for a couple of years. Under code enforcement, we've allocated $10,000 for them to buy office furniture to move into the new building. I've suggested that all three of those department heads make a joint trip down to Kentucky Correctional Industries, and I think they can buy that stuff maybe even cheaper than what we budgeted. For dispatch, we've included some upgrades to the New World. That's part of our
Mobile.
It's part of our mobile system.
Mobile Enterprise, maybe?
Now, we're, we're just scoring or receiving the RFQs for the radio study. Stacy?
Tomorrow, we open those.
Tomorrow, we open those. We know that long-term, city and the county are looking at a very significant radio upgrade over the next two or three years. And we're probably talking about six or seven million dollars. It, we have a difficulty right now for all of our departments to talk to one another, particularly in certain areas of the county, and particularly when they're operating in close proximity to each other. So the judge and I, several months ago, asked them to go ahead and do an RFQ for firms to show us the path. I've let our department heads know that we're not going to buy $7 million worth of radios and plop them down.
No.
That this will be a staged process over several years.
Maybe, I wonder if there's any grant money out for that. They're good about getting grants.
They're awfully good about that. So just another seed planted. The dispatch doesn't have much this year, but over the next few years, they'll have some great big numbers.
And Marvin, that was part of what we put into the RFQ, was that whoever the consultant is that we choose, that they would help us seek out grant funding as well and see what's available, because we hope that we can offset some of that cost.
Stacy, can I ask you a quick question?
Yes.
Or America, ask her a quick question?
Yes, sir.
That relates to the communication devices. I mean, to me, it doesn't seem like it was that long ago that we were, we were buying new communication devices. And we were so proud of it, you know, thinking that that was a, you know, a nice perk for the Police Department. But it, you know, it's, that number is so big, and it's an issue that we probably don't understand. It'd be helpful, and I'm sure this will happen, because the mayor's so good at this, is bringing us information and educating us on, how could something of this, be of this magnitude?
Be that good, yeah.
And how can other communities? What are other communities doing? Because most communities in Kentucky don't have the resources that we have to do things like this, to have a full-time Fire Department with all the equipment that they have and the number of police officers and a new station. You know, I mean, we're blessed in many, in many regards, but this is a doozy.
It is.
This is a shocker.
Yeah. I think it's about 10 years ago. So, and we were having the same problem then that we're having now, that they couldn't communicate with each other or with them maybe in the building.
The more building you get and grow, it's going to break the signal out. So that's, you know, the bigger we get, the least they're going to, the less we're going to be able to talk to each other.
And we work with, we project into the future what our needs are. And I think when I first shared with the Finance Committee that we had a huge radio issue on the horizon, both of the Finance Committee members just kind of hung their head and said, when do we get ahead?
Yeah.
But we will, this will be a, we will understand it, and we'll go about it in baby steps.
Yeah, yeah.
Before we drop that kind of money.
And they have, like you said, they have a committee that's been researching it. I know there's, I don't know all the letters and numbers, but I know there's a certain system that's standard for governments now, and so they're looking at that. But I'm sure the radio committee and the consultants will update council and then let us know. Of course, the approval for the consultant will come to you anyway, here in a few weeks.
And there will be a, a committee, a radio committee, city and county department heads who have to use the radios that will work among themselves and then work with Under Public Works, we've suggested pretty good expenditures in Public Works this year, because we're still playing catch-up with that department, where for years, they got almost nothing. Roberts asked for a bat wing mower. I was surprised when I found out during one of the storms this year that we don't have a commercial generator in Public Works. We simply had a residential generator that would run lights in the office, but nothing else. And Public Works is one of those departments that we expect to save the rest of us during the storm.
Keep going.
They've got to have a generator. So I've encouraged Robert to, he split this between Public Works and sanitation, but we've included funding for a $50,000 commercial generator. Police have a commercial generator, fire have a commercial generator, and certainly Public Works needs that upgrade as well. So we've done that. Robert's got a really ancient backhoe that we'd like to replace at $95,000, a snowplow attachment for $5,000. And David, we talked about this $150,000 dump truck at some length in our Finance Committee meeting, and we've gone back to Robert and asked him to do a couple of things. We want to understand that number better, as you requested. We also want to look at the possibility of, can we do with a couple of smaller garbage, or dump trucks there? Might we even be able to buy a couple of late-model used trucks? We're going to, we're going to explore this before we spend the money.
Well, good.
We've included the dollar amount, but, but I thought your questions were legitimate, and we will discuss them in more detail before we spend that money. Under the city engineer and stormwater, we've, we've replaced a vehicle. For any of you that have walked down, when we talk about the Court Street wall in Bankman, if you walk down the alley right here beside City Hall, we're getting ready to lose half of the wall on the roadway.
Right.
We funded that repair. We have talked to the council about our need to do a sidewalk inventory and assessment. And, you know, this kind of came to all of our attention last year, and an obligation that the city has to make sure that our sidewalks are all up to code, or people fall down and get hurt.
They do.
And we started looking into just how big a job that is, and it's a bigger job than we anticipated, when you divide, when you take our street mileage and almost double it for sidewalks, and then start allocating how long somebody can walk in an eight-hour period. And we were thinking about a couple of summer interns, and we realized pretty quickly that this is going to be a multi-year effort. We're going to start, and we're going to make progress, and we're going to do the best we can. But we're going to start that initiative with $15,000 in this year's budget. Council had made a pretty firm commitment to do the repairs at Derby Estates, and they've been funded at $282,000. And we have also asked for, this is a minimal amount, but $25,000 to help. If any of you have been down to Royal Spring Park, you know that the rock wall around the baptism steps are beginning to erode, and it's subsiding underneath the wall. And we've got to stop that. We've got to fix it. We, this amount will not allow us to dredge the channel. And the channel does need dredging at some point, to restore a better flow to it, get some of the vegetation off of the floor. But at least we can start by silvifying that rock wall, so we don't have so much subsidence in the park.
And maybe, sorry, go ahead.
As we anticipate funding of other big repairs.
Also, it's might be a good time to mention that when you do look at the stormwater professional services, you're going to see a significant increase over the prior year, and it's a lot of the services for the camera work, the cleaning. So we have included a lot of that in this budget, so you'll see a significant effort being made in the stormwater function, in addition to just these straight capital projects.
Yeah, we've, we've kind of kicked the stormwater issue down the road in terms of big financial allocations. And this year, we're trying to catch up with some of those studies that we've indicated that we need to be undertaking, mainly sub-basin studies, the ability to camera areas and do repairs while they're in there with the camera.
And just that budget overall, stormwater is increasing about 360,000 over what it was in this year's budget. So a lot of that is the Derby Estates project, but there's also additional professional services of around 122,000 to do some of those activities.
Okay, that completes the ones we have funded.
No, this is still funded.
Oh, yeah. Okay, we will fund a couple more.
If you get tired of talking, let me know. I can take over. No, that's not what I meant.
Where you going to say?
When you get tired of talking, just tell them no.
He's having to do all the talking, and I'm just standing there. Let me know if you want me to take over. Didn't mean that.
Mayor, you got a substitute if you need it.
Well, listen, if Father Lynn hadn't been here tonight, I probably would have stayed home and watched this on TV. Under sanitation, we've replaced a pickup truck. Big expenditure. We've added another side-loading garbage truck. This will give us four side-loading garbage trucks. We currently have three routes that require a side loader. Robert really would like to have one in reserve, because it kind of hurts our capacity when one goes down. We also think we're very close to adding a fourth route, so we can anticipate that by going ahead and buying the truck. Robert wants to buy a truckload full of herbies, which costs us $28,000. And we have so much growth, where we're giving out new herbies, that we use a tractor-trailer load of herbies about every year. We've also invested $8,600 in this budget into giving us GIS location program for all of our Public Works vehicles.
That's good.
We will know exactly where they are, at exactly what time they are. And if someone calls and says, truck didn't come down my street today, we can tell them what time it went down the street, and we can tell them what time it stopped in front of their house. But
You also understand if they missed it too, can't you?
Yes, we absolutely can. So this is another management tool that I thought Robert needed. Split between Public Works, because we're going to put it both on Public Works vehicles and sanitation vehicles. Under recycling, unfortunately, we've got an HVAC system that needs to be replaced at $20,000. And at the cemetery, we've been asked to replace a mower. And something you don't buy every day is a lowering device.
Yeah.
I've never bought a lowering device for the cemetery, but anyway. These are requests that we had that did not get funded. So these, I want us to pay as much attention as what we didn't fund is what we did. We had a fresh request this year from the Habitat for Humanity Group, who wants to do a street over in Boston that has a number of existing storm sewer problems. And they asked us for $75,000 to assist them on their development. For us to go from 0 to 60, or from 0 to 75,000 in one year, is just something this council has never done before. I believe that Habitat is a great program, and at a point in the future, council may wish to make this allocation. But I think they've got an obligation to come before you and make their presentation and talk about these things. And we did not think it was appropriate to fund at this stage of the budget. We'd be glad to work with you all to schedule them for a council presentation, but it was just, it was too expensive of a jump in one year. As we mentioned, we had taken one police cruiser away from the Police Department. Under the Fire Department, we took away the administrative vehicle for the assistant fire chief that we did not hire. We took away a very expensive utility truck, a rescue boat and trailer. We have one that is functional. We would like a new, better one. And Chief Ward and his staff are awfully good about seeking grants and being real active to find other ways of buying things that we to find other ways of buying things that we can't buy them in the general fund. So, Chief, if those require matches or council approval for grants, we'd be glad to help you with those as much as we can. They eventually need a trench trailer. All of their trench equipment is probably heavier than what their current trailer works well with. The big thing Chief would like to see us, in the, in the near future, make in addition to Station 3, in the administrative suite, they'd like to get their, their administrative team all on one floor and working together. The way they're set up right now, the fire marshal and the fire inspector are downstairs in the basement. They need to be up in the administrative area. I just didn't think we could afford a $400,000 building addition this year. Uh, let's see. And did we actually leave that last bullet in?
No.
Or did we take it out?
These are all, I mean, everything on this page is...
Oh, we took it out, that's right, thank you. The fire committee has been talking with Chief Ward for some time about, we know we need a fourth fire station. When you, when you look at the map of Georgetown and you draw the circles around our fire stations at the legal distances, it's clear where we overlap in a couple of good places, but it's clear where we have significant gaps in our coverage. And the gaps in our coverage now are where our most expensive businesses and most expensive houses are being built.
Yep.
It's out near the business park. The fire committee has been talking about this. We've, our eyes have glazed over when we consider how much cost is involved to build, equip, and staff a fire station. Chief Ward asked if we could take a little bit of money and start studying the needs in this coming year. I felt like that activity was a year off, Chief. And, and that's more for me in the area of managing expectations. I know this is probably a couple of years away, and, and I thought we needed to manage expectations, and I didn't put it in this year. I know your committee is aware of it, and I think council's aware of it, but we just hadn't funded another step this year. Under Public Works, about the only thing we didn't give Robert was, he wanted a replacement tractor, and we told him to patch the other one up for another year. Operating expenses, just some, some general things, so you, you'll know what you're, you're funding. We've estimated property and liability budgets increasing by 15%.
And that is just, right now, our best estimate, at the advice of our insurance company. I think our renewal is coming shortly, but not quite in time for us to prepare this original for both budgets.
But we may have that renewal in time for second reading.
We may.
I think we very likely will, in time of second reading, be able to have that, that renewal information.
And kinda like with health insurance, we, we had a bad year.
A small concession to police and fire, we increased their uniform allowance by $50 to $650 per year. I think there was a point when, back before the big financial crisis hit, Karen, that may have been in the $800 range, and so we're gradually creeping back to what the officers have asked for. Under Public Works, the special projects is simply, we asked Robert to do about anything that comes in that we don't know where else to put it. We're constantly asking him to do things that weren't budgeted and weren't anticipated, and he's a good trooper, and he does it. What we're thinking about here is making sure that we have at least one green light pole in stock, so that if somebody hits one, we don't have a gap on Main Street for six months while we order one. We've all lived through that before, and we're gonna try and avoid that in the future. So, this is just to help Robert with some of those types of projects. We increased technical supplies for the Public Works Department, about $25,000 for stop signs. And we're gonna be doing that every year for the next four or five years. This is that reflectivity thing, and, and we, we face severe legal liability if we don't replace these signs and there's an accident. We decided that we would develop a joint operating budget for the 125 West Clinton Street building. That's just the utilities and operating expenses. There are three different inter-local agencies located there. Since they're inter-local agencies, we share all the, all the costs with the county, and it, it just made sense to pay those from one lump sum, and then we'll allocate them back out, city, county. Inter-local expenses increased by $328,000. It sounds like a lot, even if you say it quickly. We, Stacy and I did go through those in pretty great detail. Of course, ambulance has somewhat of an increase because they've added the additional employees to have the full additional shift, where they had added half an additional shift last One place that I discussed with the finance committee, we, in recent years, we have normally cut the Parks and Recreation capital budget just a little bit every year, as we looked at it to see what they really needed. This year, every request that they listed made sense. They were maintenance items. There weren't any big new additions. I think it was $68,000 in capital...
For public work, or, I'm sorry, Parks and Rec.
For Parks and Rec.
It was around 80s.
86, okay. And we, we're happy to provide those budgets to you, so you all can review them on your The next one really requires some conversation, because this is where the budget gets difficult for all of us, because we want to help groups, and we want to help groups that are helping the community, but where do you draw the line? Now, council members who have been on here a while remember that we used to fund about a page of these.
About 25 of them.
Yeah. And we stopped when we had to, when, when we didn't have a choice, and we didn't have the money, we stopped. And we very slowly started adding a couple back. And the finance committee is, they have talked about, this is a slippery slope. Where do you draw the line? And how do you make a value judgment that one is worthwhile and one's not? It's impossible, because they're all doing great work. And I'm happy to, in the next couple of weeks, to either in phone calls or private conversations, talk to any of you all about this list. Habitat had asked for a $4,500 contribution to build a home. Couple of, several council members have spent time getting to know the hospitality house and what their mission is, and have expressed support for it. They actually asked us for...
$10,000.
$10,000. So, we've recommended five. The nursing home ombudsman is a very small amount that the county matches. I know they do good work. I know Nancy Brown used to be one of their local representatives, and they do great work for people in nursing homes that don't have loved ones, to check on them every day and care for them. I'll take your loss, council, on that, but at that low of a dollar amount, it, it seemed reasonable. We have not given to Ward Hall before, and I know that Ward Hall is important to the I'll be glad to discuss that with you. They've asked for an allocation. I would really like to help Ward Hall find a consultant that could help them think through what they want Ward Hall to be in the future, and how they can best sustain Ward Hall. And, uh, the museum, we have, for the last two years, I think we've given $10,000. They asked that we bump them to 30. We got halfway there. I think the fact that it's the Georgetown Scott County Museum, and it anchors one end of downtown Georgetown, the county has contributed so much to the museum, we, we've recommended that. Real excited about the next one. The Division of Veterans Affairs typically has had their offices in Louisville, and had field reps out in the state. They've just changed their approach, and they've approached us, and they want to open a Veterans Affairs field office in Georgetown, which would be great for our citizens and our veterans. They usually move into offices in courthouses or city halls. No room here, and there's no room in the courthouse, so the judge and I met with them, and we told them that if they could find a storefront, that we would pay their rent.
What do they, what if when building inspection moves out and downstairs?
Until we renovate, I don't think downstairs is, is, is a, is a good place.
Wouldn't be the best place, but it would be a place.
Yeah. What they found is, and what we've given tentative approval to, but it has to be included in this budget, they've actually looked at the, the space that the building inspection office is in now.
Electrical inspection.
Electrical inspection is now, which would provide parking, there's no ramps, there's no inclines, and it's good for handicap veteran access. We can do that with the $75,000 contribution from the city and the county, and proudly have one of the first Veterans Affairs offices out in the state. Years and years ago, when we started the Scott Education and Community Foundation, there were four equal partners. The city, the county, Scott County School System, and Georgetown College each contributed $25,000 a year to that effort. When the recession hit, we all cut back, and the county has been the only one to maintain their funding. So, the judge asked the education foundation if we're all gonna be a member of it, if we could all pay the same amount of dues, so the city and the county and the school system have agreed that we would, we would contribute that $5,000, and we will, we will match the county in that regard. And we've been notified that we're gonna have a visit this fall from Mayor Yamashita and some group from Tahara. I don't think we'll require that full amount, but we budgeted that.
Depends how many folks they bring with them.
That's true, exactly. And how many not. Right now, we think it's just two nights, and that would be good, but we don't, we don't know for certain.
Mayor, there's one you haven't, if there's not another, another page there, one that you haven't mentioned that we funded, and probably the city and the county and our Toyota partners should probably start funding more of it, and fund it all, but that is the fireworks.
It's in the budget.
It's in there.
These are new services. We're continuing to fund the fireworks.
These are increases.
Oh, okay. How much is in the budget for that one? Is it still the $5,000?
$5,000, I believe.
That's something, just since I mentioned it, for the future, that I think it would be to make sure it continues on for Toyota with whatever they're gonna give, and for the city and county to pick up the rest of it.
Well, you know, and that's a good point, Karen, 'cause the, the Qantas club that's picked it up.
Mm-hmm. And they're struggling to get the fundraising.
Yeah, they're struggling. They, they came to the judge and, and me before they made the decision, and we promised them that if they were willing to make this leap, that we would not let them fail.
Well, I think it's time to, to let them concentrate on organizing and, and the parade that they do such a fallish job in organizing it, and let us pick up the remaining bill with the help of the county.
Yeah, and I'd be glad to let them know that.
Okay, all right.
In fact, with Bill Parker's help, and Bill's kind of the big fundraiser...
Oh, yeah.
They're at the point where they've got this year's paid for and almost next year's money raised.
Good.
And that's what we encourage them to do, so they could not have the stress of being behind all the time.
Sadly, it's the same folks, thank goodness for our generous community, it's the same folks that are willing to come up and, and contribute to it year after year, but it puts, it puts pressure on the people that are contributing to it, as well as the Qantas to, to get it done, but nevertheless, it's a big event for the community.
It is, and we, we will, we will absolutely make sure that we back them up.
Great, thank you.
I'd just never seen this before. I thought this was pretty interesting. If y'all would like to see what a pie chart looks like with our expenditures by function. I, I know the colors are similar, and you can sit here and squint real hard and try and figure out what they are, but what's pretty clear, and, and I think Stacy and I can bring you these, these numbers, if you take police, which is one of those big wedges, the big dark green one, I think, and fire, which is right beside it, and a very large one, and then we add dispatch, and if we added our inter-local contributions to ambulance, way over 50% of our budget is spent on public safety. It might be interesting for us to total those, Stacy, just for the council's benefit. We talk frequently that our number-one job is public safety, and I believe our expenditures reflect that.
Yes. Yes, it's 55% on fire and police alone, and then... But I will get those totaled.
Yeah, it, it may be 75% when, when we get through with all the calculations on what we spend on, on that. We thought you should see each of these. These are expenditures for all funds, and the big blue general fund takes up so much of that picture that it kinda dwarfs all the others. So, I asked Stacy to prepare a slide that eliminated the general fund, and simply shows you the remaining funds. So, that small part of the other pie chart would look like this one if that's all it showed.
And the largest portion of that, the royal blue, that's sanitation, that is our largest funds. We talked a lot about there being a focus on the stormwater activities, so you see that on there for the 886,000 in the upper left-hand corner. The grant fund is at 1.2 million, which is the bottom bright green wedge. It's so high because we have the $1,075,000 from KIA in there, so it kinda distorts the grant funding a little bit. And then, you can see MAP Fund is the other largest that we anticipate spending a lot of our balance down this year.
Yeah, we have a, we have a larger MAP balance than I would like to have. That means we're gonna pave a lot of streets or something.
And then, just a quick comment, our alcohol revenues and expenses have been fairly flat. So, we continue to fund about 20% of the city clerk activities, as the ABC administration comes out of that office, and about 15.6% of the police salaries and benefits out of that, so we're staying pretty flat there, so those percentages are what we've allocated
This is one of the cases we wanted to show you, the incredible shrinking funds, where a couple of these funds are gonna just run out of money in the next couple of years.
Yeah.
Environmental fund balance, let's see, Stacy, you...
Sanitation, recycling, and stormwater live in this fund.
Yeah.
And what you're seeing is obviously based on current activities. That's one thing we'll note about the sanitation budget. We know we're making some changes, there's some more changes to come in the near future. We budgeted based on current activity, just because we don't have all of those pieces in place yet, and you can see easily on page one of the budget in the summary, that we're gonna, projecting 181,000 of prior-year revenues to be used in this fund in the 2018 budget. Majority of that is to balance recycling. Obviously, recycling, we have a couple of, we hope soon-to-be changes coming, but right now, it takes a lot more to run that department than we bring in. So, in addition to that, and then capital expenditures, when we anticipate those, have depleted, so it doesn't mean it'll... those have depleted. So, it doesn't mean it'll always be trending down, but between the capital expenses and the recycling, it has trended down over the last.
Now, the next one will trend down to zero. This is our landfill fund balance, where we sold the landfill and, you know, two years ago, I guess we collected all the outstanding indebtedness of $2.1 million. And I thought that would give us a big healthy fund balance, but it turned out it just covered all the red in the fund. Because expenses have been credited against that account for all these years. And so, when we collected that money two years ago, it put the fund in the black. But we will probably exhaust that fund over the next two, three years.
Yes. I think we projected, leachate costs do appear to be down. We're trying to see if that trend holds true. Kyle did a project to remove some of the ponds on the Sims Road landfill. And I think that the removal of those ponds has helped with the leachate cost. So, hopefully, maybe it'll last a year longer than we think it will, but we're showing it being down to 16,000 by the end of next year, if leachate were as high as it has been the last couple of years.
And the fund may have simply outlived its useful life. The purpose is over.
We have very minor inspection costs, maybe $200 at a time, and then the leachate, which is simply the pumpiness of that leachate with the water company.
Let's see, do we have another slide on prior year?
It's, it's after this, but we can.
Oh, it's after this, okay. I don't want to get ahead of you.
The general fund balance, just wanted to show you what it has done since 2008, thankfully, as the economy has recovered, so has our balance. We've gone from five to six million all the way up to 2012. And then, in 2013, we finally started to see it increase eight to 10 to 13. We did see the spike in 2016. We talked about that a little bit when the audit was presented and at a couple of our quarterly revenue reports, that our revenues outperformed our projections. So, we did see a large increase between 2015 and 16 on the budget, sorry, on the fund balance. The 2017 budget, right now, is anticipating using 2.3 million of prior year reserves, if everything performs according to budget. And in the upcoming years, we already mentioned, we would be using 1.5 million of reserves. So, that's why you see a little bit of the downtick in 2017 and the proposed budget for 2018.
Stacy, I think it might be worth noting, at least from my perspective, because if, if people are seeing where it's going to be in 2018, it still looks great compared to when Karen was in office and some of the things that the council had to deal with. But the reality, perhaps the reality, at least the forecast reality, is that that number could continue to go down, right, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay.
And I think the next slide, we're going to show you how we might eat away at it pretty quickly.
Okay.
As Stacy said, in, in our current year's budget, we've indicated using 2.3 million of prior year reserve. The proposed budget is the 1.5 we mentioned. The projects that are, that are, that are out there that we have not funded, but we know that they will use either prior year revenue or debt or some combination, would be the city hall renovations. And those could be, we don't know if that's 1 million or 2 million. We, we don't know yet. But we know we've got an asset that belongs to the citizens that we have to take care of. We believe that this is the year that we need to make the substantial investment in Lanes Run Business Park. And we believe that our half of that, if the county is our equal partner, our half of that will be three and a half million dollars, if we do that this year. We just mentioned the city-county radio system upgrade. That's a longer-term thing that we're not going to ask you to budget for now. Chuck had asked these questions and the finance committee has asked these questions as well. What is the status of our current debt and what can be paid off and what can't? Right before this council was seated, the council refinanced the biggest portion of their debt. And that, that was done and may not be paid off for another eight years. So, that's off the table. We just have to make the annual debt payments on those. We do have two variable-rate loans that total $2,45,000 that are eligible to be paid off. And I think what we will want to discuss is, given the fact that we have a significant business park investment to make and a significant investment in this building to take, I, I don't see a lot of value in paying off debt if we're later in the year going to reissue debt, because you suffer the issuance cost and it just makes no sense to do. So, this is a question we're going to leave with the council and the finance committee and have dialogue over the next couple of weeks about how we wish to approach these couple of big projects that will require some prior year's fund balance.
And conversations we can continue to have all year. I'm sure they'll keep coming up.
Our current debt, total debt amount is how much now?
The two bond issues that we issued in the fall of 2014 are 12.4 million. So, we're about 14, close to 14 and a half million between variable and fixed rate.
But only 2 million can be paid off right now. So, those are the, here right at the end, we wanted to give you these couple of very large pieces that clearly have an impact on the picture, but they'll, we'll look at those not so much as a part of the operating budget, but how we use that prior year reserve and potential debt. And let's see, looking, looking through the letter that accompanied your budget, just trying to think if we got everything covered.
Obviously, there were small line item changes. Any, I think any line item changes that were greater than 10,000, for the most part, we included in our presentation. You may see some other minor ups and downs individually in line items for the operating budget. If you notice any significant changes in professional services, I tried to make sure all the departments that contribute to the city works and net gain contract have, have made sure they had that covered. So, we've had some new software purchases recently. We're now, we'll have a full year of the maintenance cost of city works in the budget and some things. So, if you have any questions about any of those, just let me know.
We, we know we've given you just a boatload of information. Stacy will email you each a copy of this PowerPoint presentation, so you'll have it. And if anybody wants a hard copy, we'll provide that as well. So, you've got a, a budget document, the, and you will have these PowerPoint presentations. And Stacy and I, or the finance committee, will be happy to sit with anybody, take questions via phone or email. If there's a desire for a budget workshop, this is your all's budget. That ultimately, no one adopts this budget but you all. So, I just want to make sure we give you a process that you can, you can feel good about when it comes time to vote for it.
To the mayor and to Stacy, very nice presentation. Nice, nice job, well done.
Thank you.
I know how, I know how hard that is to do and, and it takes a lot of time. So, very nice.
Well, the last, the last two budgets, I asked the mayor, the last two budgets, they'd met their budget without a problem. And I don't see any reason why it's not meeting this budget the way they like. And I'm assuming the finance committee is 100% behind this budget because it was brought forward. So, you know.
The only, the only, there, there is one final point that I, I need to make sure as a part of the budget presentation. I pulled out three specific salaries that I want to treat differently than we treated across the board. And, and, so we need to draw attention to those. And those are the administrative assistant and the business license office, Lindsay.
Ritchie.
Thank you. Ritchie.
Building inspection.
And she's recently passed a permit technician examination.
When we, when we went to our live adoption of city works this last year, we had to pick an employee to receive the high-level administrative training. And we sent Lindsay Ritchie from the building inspection department out west for a week of very specialized training. And she's going to be very invaluable to us as we bring up city works and help others. We did not compensate her anymore for her additional training at that time. We wanted to give her six months and make sure that it was going to stick and it was going to work, and it has. So, during the budget cycle, I've talked with her supervisor and we anticipate giving her a $3,000 raise to compensate her for the additional city works responsibilities. The second salary that I've pulled out to do something different with is Jim Burgess, who's our chief building inspector. Over the last two years, we've restructured some of the people in that department. We've given raises to the other employees. Jim never asked for himself. This year, he did.
There you go.
So, I had Megan research those using the KLC Wage and Hour Survey as much as we could. And she has recommended a $5,000 increase to Jim Burgess's salary, rather than the flat 3%. And the third one is, I would like to propose a, a raise for our city attorney. Outstanding service and work. And I've been watching what some cities around us have done very recently. And frankly, I don't want to lose a good city attorney. I have recommended, this budget recommends that we move Andrew's salary by a total of $16,000 to $95,000 a year. I think it's deserved. City of Frankfurt, which is now smaller than Georgetown, just hired a city attorney at $115,000 a year.
Well, don't tell Andrew that.
Assuming he knows.
I can't go that high. City of Frankfurt just hired a city manager at $150,000.
Well, Mayor, I talked to you here last, this past summer, that when your budget come up, I would, I would appreciate you looking at it, because his work is invaluable for what he does for this city, not just, just this city attorney alone, but the other things that he's doing for us.
So, I, I recognize that's a large increase and would be glad for some of you, it's going to be tough to say in front of Andrew, "Well, that's crazy. He doesn't deserve that." But if any, if any of you would like, if any of you would like to say that to me privately, give me a call.
Not county.
But, but those are, those are the only three salaries that fall outside of the parameters that I explained to you.
From the finance committee's perspective, we've, we've advocated this for, for a while now.
Yeah.
So, it's, it's good. The whole presentation's good, Mayor. Stacy did a wonderful job and you were a good backup.
Good. I was trying to be a good sidekick for Stacy.
If you get tired, just yell at her, okay?
That's right.
You know, the other reality, Mayor, is, you know, it's, it's difficult to present a budget of this scope and magnitude and for all of us, and Karen, you dealt with it, for all of us to say, "Well, we're in 100% agreement on every single thing on there." You know? But when it comes right down to it, this is a very good budget. It's, it's one that I think the finance committee supports. And when the time comes, there may be other little things in there that you don't have to vote on during the middle of the year, but you can still support the budget.
Yeah.
And I think that's, to me, I like that approach. So, anyway.
Good. Thank you. So, you all let me know what questions you have and, and we'll let, we'll let, we will follow the process that you all lay out.
Good budget.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy.
I think Fox is about to go to sleep. He probably wants a nap.
I was going to say, that troop deserves all their badges.
Stay around.
We're not done, bro.
Guys, we still got about three hours. He said they had no thank you.
They said, "I am never running for council or mayor. Don't even think about it."
We've established that.
Exactly. We've eliminated the competition. That's what we've done.
Let's see, just two quick things and then we'll get into our cardroom discussion, which is, actually, I think we've been waiting on the cardroom discussion for two years. Not two hours, but we've been waiting two years for the cardroom discussion. Item nine on your agenda is a resolution allowing the fire department to seek a grant.
I'll make a motion under, for that sprinkler trailer. John?
It's a, it's a combined trailer. It's a, you know, we, it'll be a trailer we take around to do fire prevention demonstrations, but it will have a sprinkler.
Pretty neat. I'll make a motion, Mayor.
Thank you. And motion and voting seconded, and that would include a potential match funded of $3,367.
Five percent, yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
There you go, John.
Thank you, Chief.
I sat here all night just to hear that.
That was quick. And then, we have a resolution for a, oh, this is the KLC safety grant that I think we've already received. But they sent it to us, I think even ahead of the application, but we, we'd, we would, we would like for you to approve us of being able to apply for the grant we've got.
I'll make a motion for that, Mayor.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll second it.
If there are no questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those are very, very routine. I don't even know, do, I'm trying to decide, do we, do we need to do this in executive session or we just want to talk about?
It might be bad to go in amongst the council just briefly and then.
Then open it.
I think so.
Then I will make the motion to enter into closed session pursuant to KRS 61.8101B to discuss future acquisition or sale of real property.
Motion's been made.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we'll be in executive session just for a few minutes. We do anticipate action when we come out.
Right.
Hopefully, significant action when we come out.
Y'all can go out there and breathe and walk around.
Here, Father Lynn.
We need a drink. Y'all better get your microphone.
Yeah, want to hear what we say? Just keep them on.
Here, Father Lynn. We'll take just a minute and then call you back in.
It appears to be an effort of perfect symmetry, if you will, that after the city acting as a placeholder, if you will, for 30 years of this property, that it can now come full circle and be owned again by the Catholic Church and be loved and be preserved by the Catholic Church in the way that this community wants it taken care of. Cardone is a very important religious and cultural asset for the community and one that the community is very proud of. We frankly, for 30 years, have struggled to understand how to best use Cardone and to maintain Cardone.
Yep.
And we think the ideal transaction is that it return to the Catholic Church in a very unusual partnership. We will tonight discuss entering into a 20-year capital lease between the Catholic Church and the city of Georgetown. That will eventually lead the city to recover $1 million from the property with... And we say right up front that $1 million is not the market value of this property. It is worth significantly more in every way. But the unique partnership between the city and the church that we've developed will retain much of the use of Cardone by the community. We've been invited to use the grounds for our kite festival for other community events. The church has already invited the local theater company to make their home at Cardone for their plays and their productions. The church wishes to continue to use the main building for community events and make it available to the community. We've talked about very specific ways that we will divide the land involved with Cardone, where the church will be owning 30 acres and the city will retain, I think, 29.5 acres of the field that lies immediately adjacent to the Oakhorn Creek. It's a very dynamic partnership that we could not be more excited to be at this point. For those who have not followed the issue, the church and the city have discussed this potential transaction all the way back when Mayor Seames was in office. So this has been a dream for a very long time. And good people have stayed focused on the prize and we're at the point tonight where we're prepared to approve this 20-year capital lease transaction and move forward in this positive way. Andrew, does the MO have all the information that's needed?
Yep.
Then, Father, if you're ready, I'd be happy to have the clerk read the municipal order. And once we get a motion and second, we can have any discussion that the council may wish to have.
An order approving a 20-year capital lease of the property known as Cardone to the Roman Catholic Diocese of Lexington and authorizing the mayor to sign all relevant documents. Whereas in April 2016, the city entered into a short-term lease of the property known as Cardone to the Roman Catholic Diocese of Lexington. Having previously determined that such was in the best interest of the city and furthered economic development in the community, and whereas the city has negotiated the terms of a 20-year capital lease with the diocese as contemplated by the parties at the time of executing the short-term lease, now therefore be it ordered by the city of Georgetown, Kentucky, one, the city hereby expressly reaffirms its economic development findings from Resolution 2016-005 and the diocese's economic development plan incorporated therein. The 20-year capital lease between the city of Georgetown and the Roman Catholic Diocese of Lexington, which is attached here too and incorporated herein by reference, is approved in substantially similar form and the mayor is authorized to sign all relevant documents, including the escrow agreement and deed contemplated thereby.
Mayor, make a motion.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the 20-year capital lease for Cardone. Any questions from council members?
I'd like to say something, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I know I raised some questions about some of the points in the contract that maybe didn't protect the city as much as I would have liked. But I had an epiphany during the testimony. Okay? One of the biggest things to me is the historical preservation of Cardone. My sister-in-law's mother was of the last graduating class at Cardone and her picture is still hanging on the wall in the hallway up there. So while I was listening to the commitment from the father and the lawyer and from the church, I realized that the best hope for the preservation of that is to go ahead with this deal and enter into this contract with the church.
Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. For such a happy and momentous transaction, a voice vote just doesn't seem appropriate. Why don't we call the pro?
Mr. Bradley?
Yes.
Mrs. Butcher-Calmway?
Yes.
Mrs. Sinker-Erdley?
Yes.
Mr. Lesby?
Yes.
Mr. Showalter?
Yes.
Mrs. Tingle-Seames?
Amen. Just get it done.
You put down yes.
Put down yes.
Need some more votes here.
That would be a yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Father, congratulations.
We're excited.
Congratulations.
It will be fun.
A lot of work.
It will absolutely be fun. And this begins another journey. And we look forward to being your partner on this journey. Thank you. The only thing left under our agenda are council comments.
We'll have them tonight.
I don't know, we may have several. Mark, would you like to begin?
Have there been any more discussions on the intersection of Water Street and Main Street? What our plans are for future?
We're getting that RFQ out for an engineer design to help us with Water Street and that look and the traffic coming.
The only other question I've got is, I mean, we can talk more about it. I know we've had a lot of discussion over the last several years about the streetlights.
Yes, sir.
I don't know where that's at at this point or...
Assuming we don't have any of these long-winded budget presentations at the next meeting, maybe we can have a long-winded street lamp presentation instead of a budget presentation at the next one. Now, you and Millie have been real steady with those questions. Thank you. Chuck?
I've said enough.
All right. Got it.
Um, no. Two things. One, we had someone that was here in the audience at one of the last meetings came to the shop and made the suggestion that we put another TV screen over here and I talked to Andrew about it so that the audience could actually see what's on the TV and even like Mark and Chuck could actually see on that TV maybe better. And so Andrew thought that might be able to do.
I think we can do that. I don't want to get people's hopes up too much, but we've actually talked to a contractor about tuck pointing the areas that you had done
Yeah.
to eliminate some water infiltration
Right.
to let us at a minimum repair and paint this wall. As we do the other plans. I know that's not comfortable to sit beside.
Well, I hope the wall is strong enough to hold that TV up there.
Well, that would be after we put the TV up.
They'd put me right behind me. The TV out after the paint stops peeling.
I think that's going to get rid of me and Marvin.
We're going to be on TV or...
I'm going to roll right off the side.
We do have fun in here though, guys.
Easily we do.
And then the second thing is, as Lexington is passing their panhandling law, I don't know what stages it's in right now or not, but I have noticed already an increase in panhandlers in Georgetown.
I've been asked about that too.
And down the other day, it's been mainly out by the interstate. Kind of consistently the same gentleman is out by the interstate. But I have noticed now down here on the corner of Washington Street and right here in behind, and I'm starting to see people more frequently that's out Walmart area and all that.
There's two at Walmart about every day.
I've seen Main and Broadway.
Yep.
And I've seen the bypass. And today, in two instances, the panhandler had a large cardboard sign.
Yeah.
And he was out in all three, all four lanes of traffic.
They're getting a little more aggressive with... The gentleman that stays most of the time out on the interstate, he stays right where he... You know, he's not aggressive at all. But I've seen and I've noticed whoever the guy was down here, he's much more aggressive. And so I have a feeling as Lexington finishes up what they're doing, it's going to push to Georgetown.
And they're still, as far as I know, Lexington is still finding out if theirs is legal. Do you have any update on that, Trey?
I know that the Supreme Court recently shot Lexington's down. So now they instituted that new panhandling ban.
Yeah.
The ban.
I think they have passed an ordinance that's challenged, overturned. And now they passed another ordinance which will also probably be challenged.
But we should go to school. I don't want to go through the suits they're doing.
No, no, no.
And once they go through the suits, we should copy their action.
Well, I think so too.
But we've got the problem.
We're starting to get an obvious problem, so yes.
David?
Mayor, it seems like I bring up issues with gravel on the road.
One night when you were gone, somebody brought it up for you.
Who was that? Somebody on that side or something?
Mark.
Hold up for you.
The streets were... Well, the entrance to Cherry Hill coming off Oxford.
Yeah.
I don't know if they've done roadwork, but there's gravel all over that entrance. I don't mind calling Public Works if that's more appropriate to bring it up in here all the time.
We talk to them every morning, so it's okay. We can deliver that message for you. Anything else, David?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Just happy about Cardone.
Very.
Very happy about this. Thrilled.
I hope so. Now we're going to have to come through.
I know.
Now, I just want to tell you all that I was asked by Amy Preston to volunteer this week with Habitat to come help them build. It's Women's National Building Week this week. And they trust me with a hammer, which is scary in itself right there. But they got two houses to build. One is being framed now and there's another one coming up soon. And anybody that wants to volunteer to help with Habitat needs to call Amy Preston in Georgetown. And I'm wearing the shirt right there. Sponsored by Lowe's, my favorite people.
Very nice.
So I'm excited. I'm excited.
Put a shirt on if she knows how to build a house.
No. No, she knows how to take instruction by somebody who knows.
On that note, we shall stand to turn.
You don't even want to comment on that.
Oh, we loved it.
And there's my shirt. I was excited.